Well, the difference in the three of us is he don't look that much different than he did in high school.
Other than writing. Me and Teddy, we look our age. My hair fell out and his turned white. Man, we didn't know how good we had it. I kept, my kids, I kept telling them when they was in high school, "Y'all need to enjoy it this time too." Man, it's a...
You sure know how to save the time. There you go. That's something to go with. Find the rest of us.
Man, it's a... It's a three-ring circus and I was hoping they would speedily kill that mess, but now the Congress is still balking. They need to put that on top of the list, that and taxes. Oh, I was trying to get them to come fix his tablet. They gotta change your Wi-Fi. One's down, they gotta fix it.
That product work for you?
Don't make money.
Almost?
Of course, I've, uh...
It provoked a thoughtful discussion.
I found it. Grocery stores and restaurants don't like it to feed me if they don't get some money back.
Okay. Yeah, well, I just want to make sure we didn't start something we didn't mean to.
Yeah, there is a...
Okay. Do what?
It's like mileage.
I just thought it would help.
Do it right.
All right, tell us, I gotta be smarter than this thing.
Well, we need to...
My house not being here, they're separate, there's two of each.
Calling a softball game makes it almost, if you go to any distance, you can make a pass or what's made for the game on travel.
Yep. There's a... Basically, you get into college, kind of travel ball. How you doing?
Everybody well?
Yeah.
Good to see you.
Absolutely.
So, we're all online now?
Frank, I mean.
Is everybody online now?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah, we're good.
Very good. We ready, Mac? If you would, please stand with me and join us as we say the Pledge of Allegiance and have an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and through the road for which it stands, one nation under God and divisible with liberty and justice for all.
Father, Lord, we thank you for this day and all your many blessings. We thank you for each one who's here, Lord, and we ask now, as we conduct your business, that we would do it in a manner that's pleasing to you and that takes the best interest of our county in consideration. Lord, just ask you to watch over us and lead and guide us when I say things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Can we go ahead and call a meeting to order? First item is to approve the minutes. Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And my pen's not right. Karen, do you have an extra pen? Before we get going, good, I'd like to remind everybody to, if you haven't already done so, silence your cell phones, that way we don't have too many interruptions. We can get through this as quickly as possible. Mac, do you have any announcements?
Yes, sir. We have item number one, a request for continuance. The applicant has apparently been hospitalized and is unable to be with us, so they've requested a continuance to fix mine.
Commissioners, do you have a motion?
Motion.
Say.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, item number two, Matt Kirk with the Planning Department, is a small-scale amendment requested by Jane Lambert and Timothy Smith. This project is located just about a tenth of a mile east on Deer Valley Drive from Highway 1087 in Mossy Head. With a little background on this particular request, this lot was acquired by the county in a forfeiture involving the Sheriff's Department. They operated a substation there for a number of years and decided they no longer needed that particular property. It was sold to a private individual, but in the period of time that the county held title to this particular property, we changed the land use from rural residential to public facilities in the year amendments in 2011. And this is a county-sponsored amendment to change that back to the original land use, which would make that lot conforming and eligible for regular FHA financing.
Commissioners, any questions of staff?
Mac, I'm sorry, I didn't swear you in. Let me do that real quick. Anyone who anticipates testifying on any item before the board tonight, can you please stand up and raise your right hand and let me swear you in? Anyone who anticipates speaking to the board tonight. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth? Thank you. And would you come to the microphone where you let us know that you have been sworn? And it helps us if you'll spell your last name if it has unusual spelling. And Mac Osungar testimony was under oath.
Yes, sir, it was. Additionally, we'd like to introduce the staff report that's in everyone's package into evidence for this particular item.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend you accept it.
Accept it.
Be happy to answer any further questions you might have, but this puts this lot back into a conforming status and restores the subdivision.
Commissioners, any questions? Hold on one more, let me see if we have any comments. If we don't have any questions of staff at this time, thanks, Mac. There's nobody who's signed up to speak. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this item? CNN will close the public comments. Commissioners?
Motion to approve.
Say.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item, commissioners, is item number three on your agenda. This is a petition for abandonment application submitted by Core Engineering requesting the abandonment of a government pad deezma that covers a portion of Lot 8 in the Sundance subdivision, which is in the Miramar area. We request that the staff report be introduced into evidence for this particular item. It's contained within your books.
It's accepted.
And in this particular case, the Planning Department takes no position on the proposed abandonment, other than the process has been properly followed in accordance with Land of Elm code.
Okay.
The applicant is here to present his abandonment request.
Thanks, Mac. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Ed Stanford. I'm with Core Engineering Consulting. I have been sworn in. What we're requesting tonight is a fairly simple request, but it may get a little bit confusing because of the process that went on prior to this. My client, Mr. John Foye, purchased this subdivision. It was eight lots and it was developed and it was platted. And as he was rolling through getting his building permits, he noticed that all of the lots had a basically a 25-foot wide building pad, except for Lot Number 8. So, as he did a little bit more research, he discovered that through some mechanism or, you know, missed observation during the plating process, there was actually, in addition to the required 10-foot landscape buffer between the Sudnet subdivision neighboring 70 RV development that's been there for many, many years, there was an additional or part of a government easement that was 16 and a half feet. So, what Mr. Foye is really asking for is to be able to build on 6 and a half feet of the 16 and a half foot. He doesn't really need the entire thing, but this is an easement to nowhere and it doesn't even have the benefit of sharing any sort of access between the two properties because the RV park has already been developed after many, many years. So, we're asking just for this one lot, Lot Number 8, of this platted subdivision, that this portion of the easement be relieved so that he can actually build a 25-foot wide house. Otherwise, he will still build a house and it will be a two-story home, but it may be a little bit more difficult, you know, on him. So, the landscape buffer will still be required to be there, fencing, all the green space, nothing is changing according to the plat, except for this one issue. Okay?
Just so I understand, the easement doesn't connect to an easement on the adjoining property, it's just on that lot?
That's correct. If you look at the aerial, if we can go to that, you'll see where the RV park is backed up to this property and there's no road there. In fact, we were required to put an additional road in, or otherwise, we would have bisected the property lines.
Okay. Commissioners? Any other questions, applicant?
No.
No?
No.
Thank you very much. We'll open up the public comment. We have nobody who's signed up. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? CNN will close the public comments.
Excuse me, Chairman. We did receive one letter of opposition, which I believe we had passed out. It came in too late to make it to the board books before they were distributed.
Okay. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Could I ask him one question?
Yeah.
Just for the record, I assume he's paying taxes on this already? Mr. Foye?
Yes.
Yes, just an easement, so...
No.
No, it's private.
That's what I want to make sure we cleared up.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Commissioners, the next item on our agenda is item number four, the Villages at Seegrove, also known as the Watercolor, PUD, and DRI Amendment. And Renee Bradley is the planner for this particular item and she will present it.
Good afternoon, Renee Bradley, Planning Development Services for the record. St. Jump Company and Watercolor Association Incorporated are requesting to amend the Watercolor Plan Unit Development and Development of Regional Impact. The applicant's proposing an amendment that will seek to reduce the overall residential density and refine the open space and recreational locations within the DRI and the PUD. The proposed amendment to the Watercolor PUD also seeks to reduce density by 64 units from 1,140 to 1,076 residential units. This application request has been sent to the state. We have a letter of approval that it would be recognized as an E2 change, which is a nonsubstantial change from DEO. We've got one opposition letter that we received around 4:00 this afternoon that we did as a handout from...
Is that the one from Craig Powell?
Greg, yes, that's correct. His attorney.
Has the applicant been able to see this letter?
I haven't seen it.
Okay, this is, you know, this is a significant, I think, impediment and you need to see a copy of it before we proceed so you can have the opportunity... Commissioners, I'm just...
Go ahead and explain what it is.
...just... Matt, the letter I'm reading here is a letter from an attorney who claims to represent a Gregory Myers, who claims in a Chapter 11 petition for bankruptcy has been filed on November 18th, 2015. The way that I read the bottom paragraph, which is the most important paragraph in my reading, is that in order to move forward, based on his representation, we would have to have clearance from the United States Bankruptcy Court from District of Maryland in order to proceed.
Mr. Davis, what's your read on that?
Well, I'm not a bankruptcy lawyer. Let me just say that. I do have some concerns. First of all, no lawyer wants to violate a bankruptcy stay.
That's not a lawyer.
That's, no lawyer ever wants to violate a bankruptcy stay. But my concern is that this is a homeowner's association who's a co-applicant. So, the association that he's a member of, as I understand the application, is a co-applicant. And I'm not entirely sure that he actually owns a portion of the common area. And I'm gonna let Mr. Shipman talk about that, if you don't mind, because I don't know exactly how that particular homeowner's association is set up.
Yeah, and nobody's trying to play fast and loose here. They're just coming in full clock.
We lawyers see bankruptcy stay. We all get nervous.
Yeah. Mr. Myers has been a somewhat interesting character in the HOA for some time. This is a Chapter 720 HOA. It's not a Chapter 718 condominium. And the distinction between a 720 HOA and a 718 condominium is if we were a 718 condominium, then an owner of a condominium would have an undivided equal interest in whatever the common areas are. In a 720 HOA, the HOA, the homeowners' association, the nonprofit corporation, owns the common area, not the homeowner. So, Mr. Myers, I mean, I'm not a bankruptcy lawyer either and I don't know what got filed in Maryland and I suspect this bankruptcy lawyer in Maryland knows nothing about Florida HOA law, but all Mr. Myers would own in Watercolor would be his actual house and the lot the house sits on. They would have an pertinent use right. They would have the rights that are provided to them under the recorded declaration, but they don't actually own the property. The property's owned by the nonprofit corporation. This particular application came about as a result of negotiations between the homeowners' association and the developer, in which we not only did the Board of Directors of the HOA come to an agreement on this, but the board put it to a vote of the membership. And the membership, 82%, approximately 82% of the membership voted, a little over 80% of the membership voted, because you can never get 100% of anybody to vote on anything. And of the membership that voted, 82% voted yes, they were for this. And they were for it for several reasons. One is it actually reduces the future density. There's still a phase of Watercolor that hadn't been developed and St. Joe has agreed to reduce the density of that development. It does not, it does not reduce at all the amount of open space that Watercolor has. It does slightly change the use in the sense that there's a small area next to the beach club where they are expanding the beach club to add an additional swimming pool and deck. So, it would go from being native vegetation to a swimming pool and deck, but that's it. I don't...
It's a threshold issue, and I don't mean to interrupt, just as a threshold issue, you're saying that because of the way that this is styled, that this letter has no merit? There's no automatic stay against the association?
I don't believe so. The association certainly hasn't received anything. We're not taking a legal action against Mr. Myers. And Mr. Myers does not own the common area.
I think that's the distinction.
Nor are we actually even taking any common area away. All this application does is change the density to make the neighborhood less dense, not more dense, and slightly changes some of the open space use, if you will, which would actually make it more valuable, because now you'll have an additional swimming pool where before you had native vegetation. So, the owner of record is the homeowners' association? Right. The owner, the owner of the common areas that have, of the phases that have been developed, is the HOA, the nonprofit corporation. Now, there is a phase that the density is being reduced in that St. Joe hasn't developed, where St. Joe would be the owner of that property and there would ultimately be common area in that property. If, but St. Joe actually isn't even under any obligation to develop it if they don't want to. So, I don't, I don't see a basis for this. Mark and I talked about this earlier. I think they're thinking that this is a 718 condominium and it's not. It's a 718...
That would be my guess. And I would also point out that we're not making any final determination anyway. It's a recommendation. So, you certainly can move forward and we'll look at it before the...
Yeah, that's the other thing. This is not actually a formal legal action.
Right.
You're just recommending that the county commission, I suppose, now that I have this letter, regardless of what you do tonight, I can call this guy and discuss it with him, but I don't see any water in this. He does not have a deed to this property.
I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something along the lines, because...
Yeah, I understand. And like I said, when we see bankruptcy, we all get a little nervous, but I agree that, first of all, your action would not be a final action, would affect the property. And secondly, it most likely is that he does not have an ownership interest in it.
And again, not only does the HOA board and the developer agree on this, we put it to a member vote, and 82% of the people that cast votes, which was about 80% of the owners, are also for this. I have, I've got David Smith here as an engineer, if you have any questions about the particulars of what exactly changes in this application, to answer.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Yeah, if somebody could just basically outline where on this this is happening and what's happening.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering. And as was presented, we are proposing an amendment to the DRI as well as an amendment to the PUD. And there's two main points that we're proposing to amend. And the first is the residential density is being reduced by 64 dwelling units. Currently, Watercolor is approved for 1,140 and the reduction would set the max, new maximum allowable to be 1,076. So, there's currently developed 1,022, which would be an additional 50 units at the end of the day that could be developed by that change. The second change or requested modification is to refine the open space. And the open space is being refined within the entire development community. And when DRIs are planned, there are conceptual exhibits that are prepared to define the vision for the development of the DRI. And we're here today requesting to refine the open space based on the as-built conditions of Watercolor as it's been developed. As presented, we're not reducing the open space. It's staying the same amount. We're just refining the open space in various locations throughout the development, but the totals are staying the same. So, that's why we're here. That's the two requests for the amendments to the DRI.
Two for everybody.
And I did while I'm here, too, I want to make just a real quick point of clarification as those are being passed out. You'll notice in the staff report, there was a comment to remove parking from an open space area. And I would like to point that out and clarify what that meant. It's in this area or specifically in this location here. And there were parking, and it was shown in this location. There is no parking here. It's open space. It's currently vegetated today. There's no plans to pave parking in that area. So, the exhibits that are passed out just show that parking being removed from this exhibit. So, I just wanted to clarify that comment in the staff report. I'd be more than happy to answer any additional questions you have.
Are both these maps the same?
They are. One is the PUD map. They're identical. The other is the open space map that's part of the DRI amendment.
Do you just like killing trees or what?
I don't.
Just giving you a hard time. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Where are they eliminating the, you know, the other units?
It's just in the, they're entitled 1,140.
So, there's no actual area that's there?
No, it's just across the entire development plan.
I think reductions are always good, so...
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
82% of the people want it.
We have.
Mr. Chairman, we'd also like to enter the staff report and your packages into evidence.
Would recommend you do so.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering, and as was presented, we are proposing an amendment to the DRI as well as an amendment to the PUD. And there's two main points that we're proposing to amend, and the first is the residential density is being reduced by 64 dwelling units. Currently, Watercolor is approved for 1,140, and the reduction would set the max, new maximum allowable to be 1,076. So there's currently developed 1,022, which would be an additional 50 units at the end of the day that could be developed by that change. The second change, or requested modification, is to refine the open space. And the open space is being refined within the entire development community. And when DRIs are planned, there are conceptual exhibits that are prepared to define the vision for the development of the DRI. And we're here today requesting to refine the open space based on the as-built conditions of Watercolor as it's been developed. As presented, we're not reducing the open space, it's staying the same amount, we're just refining the open space in various locations throughout the development, but the totals are staying the same. So that's why we're here, that's the two requests for the amendments to the DRI.
Two for everybody.
And I did, while I'm here too, I want to make just a real quick point of clarification as those are being passed out. You'll notice in the staff report, there was a comment to remove parking from an open space area, and I would like to point that out and clarify what that meant. It's in this area, specifically in this location here, and there were parking, and it was shown in this location, there was no parking here, it's open space, it's currently vegetated today, there's no plans to pave parking in that area. So the exhibits that are passed out just show that parking being removed from this exhibit. So I just wanted to clarify that comment in the staff report. I'd be more than happy to answer any additional questions you have.
Are both these maps the same?
They are, one is the PUD map, they're identical, the other is the open space map that's part of the DRI amendment.
Do you just like killing trees, or what?
No, I don't.
Just kidding. Just giving you a hard time. Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Where are they eliminating the, the other units?
It's just in the, they're entitled 1,140.
So there's no actual area that's there?
No, it's just across the entire development plan.
I think reductions are always good, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
82 percent of the people want it.
We have.
Mr. Chairman, we'd also like to enter the staff report and your packages into evidence.
Would recommend you do so.
Accepted.
Thank you.
We have nobody who signed up to speak. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments. Commissioners, it's your pleasure.
Recommend.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, that moves us to item number five, the Musset Bayou subdivision. And Bob Baranti from our staff will introduce this item.
Good evening, commissioners, my name's Bob Baranti, I'm part of county staff. I'd like to give you a quick introduction and then review of a couple of things that you have in front of you in the, in the additional packets. This is a major development order application submitted by Jenkins Engineering, who is here today to speak on this. They're requesting approval for a 31-lot, single-family subdivision on a 7.75 plus or minus acres parcel with the future land, land use of neighborhood infill. You'll notice that there are, there is a big packet of public comments, and then there's one single letter that came in later. And then there's also correspondence starting today on the, on, checking on a couple flood plane conditions. Staff submitted, the flood plane manager submitted questions to the developer, the developer responded, and then the flood plane manager said that, responded back that it met all comp plan and land development code issues. Before I turn it over, I just want to point out, so if this, if this would be recommended for approval tonight, the conditions set in that packet for the flood plane would become, would have to be included in the plan, a new submittal would be made before it went to the BCC if you chose to make the recommendation. It also, this project also has a proportionate fair share amount of $37,750 for the US 98 transportation corridor, and at this time, I will turn it over to Jenkins Engineering for their review.
Let's see if anybody has any questions for you real quick. Commissioners, anything for staff?
Not right now.
All right now, okay, you got lucky.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rick Borst, I was not sworn in.
Sure. If you saw me swear or form, the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth.
I do, thank you. Good evening, I'm Rick Borst with Borst Consulting and Management, I'm the project manager for this. I just want to take just a couple of minutes to give you some history on this project. The parcel was initially purchased in 2006. It's a 7.75 acre parcel. It was purchased at that time with the land use of neighborhood infill, which allowed up to eight density units per acre. And in 2006, the initial conceptual plans were to build a high-density, multifamily plan based on that infill designation. The project is located on Musset Bayou and 98, and there are actually a couple of infill projects that are in the vicinity of this parcel. Here's a subject parcel, within infill, we have Water Oaks, and we also have Plantation at Santa Rosa, all within the area. The Water Oaks subdivision, that's an infill project, actually is 69 units over 10 acres, with a density of 6.9 per acre. We've got multifamily in this development, as well as 45 single-family homes. Another project that is infill within the area is Plantation at Santa Rosa. This is a 10-acre parcel, has 72 units of single-family, which puts it just over at seven units per acre. In the 2006 timeframe, when the parcel was initially purchased, the conceptual plan at that time was for 60 units that sat on the 7.75 acres. It was just under eight units per acre, they had at that time 20 townhomes, as well as 40 single-family homes. Again, that was in 2006, so it shows you what was happening with infill projects at that time. Since that timeframe, the owner has certainly reevaluated the project. We're now in 2016, and ideally, what he is looking to bring now to the county is a community that is very low as far as residential density. It's one also that we feel will be a nice single-family development along Musset Bayou. On May of, May 24th of 2016, we had our community meeting, where we presented a project that had 33 units. In discussion with the residents, they felt that was still a bit too much residential as far as density, so we actually reduced that down to 31 units, which is what we are proposing today. The project today looks this way. Again, here's Musset Bayou, we've got 31 single-family lots, we've got no multifamily, simply single-family. We actually brought wet retention, the water feature, to the inside of the community. All of our green space, we have walking trails for the community, for the neighbors. We also have internally a community area that has a swimming pool, it has a playground area for the children, a dog park, and also walking trails. All of this resides within the 31 homes. This will be the only community in the greater vicinity that has these types of amenities for a smaller, single-family development. So again, we're here today presenting 31 units on this, this project. Again, with this as well, we are not requesting any variances, there's no preservation buyout. We are meeting, as was stated actually in the staff report, that the development will meet requirements of the Walton County Comp Plan and Land Development Code. Thank you for the opportunity today.
Based on neighborhood infill, what is the maximum units per acre you could do right now?
Eight density units would be the max. So we, yeah, so we could have come in at 62, but again, literally came in, interestingly enough, we actually meet low-density residential zoning at four density units per acre. So it's that low.
Very good.
Okay.
Any other questions for applicant?
I'd like to now bring in Jamie Hubanks from Jenkins Engineering. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners, Jamie Hubanks from Jenkins Engineering, E.U.B.A.N.K.S., and I was sworn in. I'll touch on a few things from the engineering side, certainly any questions that you may have afterwards, feel free to ask them. But in particular, a number of the public comments that came up, I just want to address real quick. There was some concerns issued about the buildings being placed on pilings, fill that particular items of that nature, and that was actually one of the items that flood plane manager for Walton County coordinated with us today, that Bob was talking about. The items, the homes that are within the flood plane, those will be on pilings, that is actually a Walton County comprehensive plan requirement. Certainly, the owner, if he could do slab-on-grad or something of those, of that nature, he would, but unfortunately, within the comprehensive plan, we have to meet those requirements. So they will be elevated in that regard. That was one of the questions and one of the complaints that the neighbors had, but unfortunately, there's, there's really no way around that. Another comment that has come up quite a few times had to do with the vegetation of the site. Certainly, as commissioners are aware, there is no tree protection standard within Walton County, and in this particular case, there is no preservation requirement for the sites. We don't have any scrub oak or any of the required habitats. However, the meeting that we had, that Rick described, the community meeting, we did make some agreements. The entirety of the landscape buffer around the perimeter of the site will remain natural vegetation, all the existing pines, everything within there. And that serves two different purposes. One, it reduces the impact on the developers' end, but the existing trees, the taller trees, the existing vegetation actually continues to provide some additional screening that a new tree would not provide at this time. As for internal vegetation, to be honest, that will be from a lot-by-lot perspective as the home's built out. There may be some particular trees that the owners wish to keep, that will be their regards, their decisions. But we do not propose fill, so the trees will remain if they decide to. And really, the last item, because I know it's come up today in particular, I got a number of comments about it, had to do with the notification process for this particular site. Certainly, the commission's familiar with the process, but I'll read real briefly just a letter from one of the neighbors, from, it says from the desk of Michelle H. Bailey, and it's describing the public notice letter that we sent out, that is required to be sent out to all, everybody within 300 feet, highlighting just a few points here. She states that the letter by Jenkins Engineering was intentionally misleading, and goes on to say that I believe because they knew there would be opposition, they worded their letter in such a way to be confusing as to when, where, our concerns could be rightfully voiced. And then in the next paragraph or so, says the applicant or engineering firm may state that perhaps they have used this letter or wording many times over. If this is the case, then shame on them. At least someone, at least someone finally caught on to it, and by using this circumstance as an example, and putting a stop to it, this will save, save help, future owners from being misled on when and where they have the ability to make themselves heard. You know, certainly, we've been in front of this commission literally hundreds of times, we've sent out literally hundreds of these notification letters. Just for the commission's knowledge, if you're not aware, that letter is word for word, it comes from the development order packet that Walton County provides, we literally do not change those words one bit. So there are a number of questions about whether we posted our signs, whether, you know, all those particular items were done, you know, we submit affidavits to that regard. Anything and everything that is asked of us notification-wise, I am confident in saying that we have done correctly, so.
Yeah, I actually reviewed the letter they sent, compared it to the sample notification letter, I feel it gives adequate notice of the time, place, and subject of the meeting.
Thank you.
Time, place, and subject of the meeting.
Any questions for engineer?
Just a quick question, how long has this particular lot had whatever land use designation has had?
If I am not mistaken, it goes back to, previous to the purchase, which was in 2006.
Least 2004, probably.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. And we do have a couple people who have signed up to speak, so we'll open the public comments. Lois Lassur?
Good evening, my name's Lois Lassur, that's L.A.S.E.U.R. I'm with Saxon Lassur, we represent some of the neighbors adjacent to this property who have concerns about mainly the density and the height of the buildings that will be constructed. At the community meeting, it was stated to the community that they were planning to do two stories over a garage. Now, I've been told several different things, one, that they're going to do two stories over pilings, and the bottom will not be enclosed, and therefore, it doesn't count as a story. The other thing is Mr., the letter from Jenkins Engineering, and what it basically says is, we'll meet the flood zone, we will either build on pilings, or we will build with breakaway walls, as long as we're in the flood zone, but they make no commitment whatsoever about areas that are not in the flood zone. If those homes are going to be two-story over a garage, whether or not it's in the flood zone, the Walton County Land Development Code requires an additional 50-foot buffer from the adjacent neighborhoods, because those neighborhoods are 100% one- and two-story homes. And that additional buffer is not being provided. So at a minimum, I would think that any approval recommendation would need to be conditioned on them not building more than two stories, or providing that buffer, one or the other. I listened to Mr. Borst's arguments on compatibility and density. I agree that four units to the acre, most places is considered to be very low-density, but everything around this, almost completely within that quarter-mile radius, is much lower density than what they're proposing. Virtually, all of the surrounding area and all of the adjacent property is at a minimum two units to the acre, and in many cases, lower even than that. They're not just proposing a slightly higher density, they're proposing to double the density that the adjacent neighborhood has. And I have, I have put together some quotes from Walton County Comprehensive Plan that talks about how you determine what the appropriate density is, and while I would be the first to argue that you don't have to be identical to what's next to you, you do have to be within the range. You don't want to double the allowable density over what your neighbors have. There are only 10 lots that actually abut this property. Most of them are, if not, most of them are over half an acre, many of them are closer to an acre. And I have two things that I'll pass out. One is the land use map, and one is a spreadsheet that talks about the adjacent properties and what the densities and intensities are.
Yeah, hold on, make sure you give the applicant a copy if you have it. And secondly, the code provision, or it's the comp plan provision, it's policy L dash We're not going to enter that evidence, because it's the code, I mean, it is what it is.
Right, it's just for the convenience of the board members, so they don't have to scrabble through it.
You want these admitted, okay.
Yes, please.
So the map and the spreadsheet would be entered as objectors exhibit, the map will be one, and the spreadsheet will be two.
Accepted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
This is another code provision, you know, it's just for the convenience of the board. And it basically reads as follows, "New residential projects with buildings over two stories in height shall be set back 50 feet from residential preservation areas which contain more than 75% one- or two-story dwellings." 100% of the adjacent properties are residential preservation, and they are one- or two-story dwellings.
What does it say, "shall"?
It is, "New residential product, projects with buildings over two stories in height shall be set back 50 feet from residential preservation areas which contain more than 75% one- or two-story dwellings." It's the code I, yeah.
I was curious, because on this other page you're handing out, indeed, it says, "Development transition from lower intensities to higher intensities may require additional buffering."
Right, and then it refers you to the Land Development Code for what those additional buffers may need to be. The Land Development Code is very specific, if you're going, and it...
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble following, maybe because I'm handing out stuff, but, so, "New residential projects with buildings over two stories in height shall be set back 50 feet from residential preservation areas." Where is the residential preservation area, I'm sorry?
Both sides.
Okay, both north and south.
North and south are both residential preservation, and they contain 100% one- and two-story homes. So if they are going to build three stories, and since it specifically says two stories in height, I would argue it doesn't really matter whether they're on pilings or not, because it's really the height that you're trying to buffer from. The planning department apparently does not share that interpretation, but since it specifically references two stories in height, and I would say that the code is absolutely saying, if you're going to be that much higher than what's around you, you need that additional buffering, and they're not providing it.
Well, they're not telling us what they're building, either.
Well, if they're not going to provide that additional 50-foot buffer, then they need to commit to building only two stories.
Wouldn't they have to come and let somebody know at some point so that could be addressed? I mean, they're not telling us what they're, what the buildings are going to be as far as the type, and we don't have the elevations, the really comp plans, or what they're doing.
True, but it needs to be in their development order that if they're not going to provide that additional buffer, they're limited to two stories, so that when the building department gets those building permits, they know to look for that.
I'm sure they would catch that before it got that far, so, I'm sure you'd let them know.
Well, it would depend on whether, you know, the... Well, it would depend on whether, you know, the neighbors, when they see somebody putting up a, a building, they would have to go to the, to the building department and ask for the plans and find out if it was going to be more than two stories. And if it's not out there in the development order for people to realize, then they may have spent a lot of money getting plans that they can't build. So you definitely, I think, want to give notice to people that they're going to be limited to two stories.
Is that, well, I'll ask you on that.
How did a neighborhood infill get stuck between two residential preservation areas?
Well, I think at the time that they were adopting the neighborhood planning areas for South Walton, they looked at this as an undeveloped piece of property between two established subdivisions and therefore they considered infill to be the most appropriate category. Low-density residential wasn't even an option at that time. That's a much later land use category that was added in. But the idea behind infill was always you build what's next to you or you build close to what's next to you. You infill, you make yours blend in with what's already there. And what's already there are half-acre lots and above.
Commissioners, this, I'm sorry, this part of the code, this neighborhood planning area, unfortunately, back in 2011 when the year-based amendments were done, this part of the land, of the comp plan was removed, the neighborhood planning areas were taken out. Unfortunately, the land development code portion that implemented the neighborhood planning area, neighborhood planning area districts, for lack of a better way of putting it, was not repealed. We tried to apply these actually in another development, and I'm sorry, the name of it just went right out of my head, but in another development and we were told we could not by the board. So I'm not sure we can apply these, these requirements in this neighborhood planning area until we get them put back into the code, until we get those districts put back into, to the comp plan. I just want to let you know that we've had this issue-
Did the board make that decision?
Yes, we've had this issue and we lost it, if I remember correctly. And I'm not sure if it came about as a, I can't remember if it came about as a, as a-
Appeal of the director's determination.
Director's determination, there was an appeal. That's correct. That's correct. So I couldn't remember how it came about, but that's-
But I will say that the Board of Adjustments has not held that this is not applicable. We have not received a director's determination that we could appeal, but we would certainly appeal such if we got one.
But I think it's already been decided, but I understand what you're saying, but I think it's already been decided in another determination. He made a determination in response to another request for a development order. It was reversed.
Cai, I believe.
Yeah, it was actually upheld.
But that was the 250-foot buffer-
Right, that's correct.
-that was for commercial.
That's correct. That's correct. I remember writing the order, but I don't remember what the name of the project.
The application of the code was the same.
Yes.
And I would argue that since the land development code is allowed to be more restricted than the comprehensive plan, the additional buffer would still stand, but obviously, y'all are not the, the place for me to make that argument.
We're not the body to make that decision, I don't think.
Basically, those are our arguments. The rest of the neighborhood is much, much lower density than what is proposed. And although I'm grateful they're not proposing eight units to the acre, I don't think they'd have gotten it in 2006 and I know they could not get that today. I don't think they should get four units to the acre. It's too dense for what is in the neighborhood. The few areas that they have identified that are higher density are either areas, subdivisions where they clustered outside of wetlands and therefore they might have smaller lots, but the overall density is still two units to the acre because they're conservation residential, two to one. Or they are at the very far outside of the quarter-mile radius and, you know, have developed out for whatever reason at that higher density. But this particular property only has 10 lots abutting it and they're all much larger than the .16 of an acre that most of these lots are.
Maybe you're not the one to add, but watch that on Must, Mustard Bio Court, looks like a lot of roofs. Two, two properties south.
See if I can grab something.
It looks like a lot more than-
About 330 feet south.
Yeah.
Again, if you look at that actual plat, you will see that they had a lot of wetlands and they clustered their lots away from the wetlands, so the lots themselves are relatively small, but the overall density is still two to one, I believe. It should be on that spreadsheet.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Rick Borst. That's you, I'm sorry. You got there quicker than I thought we were. Okay, anybody else? Audience wish to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion. Yes, please do.
Just real quick, commissioners, I know Mr. Davis talked a little bit about the NPA issue. We are aware of that. We have no objection to that particular thing, however it goes. The two stories.
Okay.
And then, Rick, you want to go?
Thank you. A couple of quick comments on density. You can't play both sides. So what I mean by that is that, yes, I agree that many of the surrounding communities have larger lots. It needs to be noted that as residential preservation, all of these developments, without exception, were either planted or recorded prior to 1990, which means at that time, they did not have the water and sewer services, do not have stormwater retention ponds, do not have sidewalks that are not required through all communities. So while I recognize and respect that, the other comment also is that we are here today for you for a development order for a 31-lot subdivision. We are not proposing single, two, or three-story homes. I will say the community meeting, we brought some renderings to show different home types, which were single-story and two-story homes. Because again, with these lots that we have proposed here, even with the setbacks, which were following the Walton County setbacks, the first floor, floor plan is just under 2,500 square feet. So we don't have to build massive homes in order to achieve square footage. The other comment, which is important to note, is that there are two developments within our area of compatibility, which was mentioned. One is Churchill Oaks. Now granted, Churchill Oaks is a lovely development, very nicely done. What's interesting is that in Churchill Oaks, the, there were two home sales as we looked over the past six months to a year. On lot 12 sold for $1.5 million. Another one, lot 26, the home sold for also $1.5 million. On the first one, lot 12, that is .14 acres in size. On lot 26, they have a 3,400-footed home that is on .17 acres. Now, that's Churchill Oaks. So let's, let's go to the south of our parcel. South of our parcel, we have Mustard Bay in there, which is a very, very successful. Now granted, what's stated is true, there's a lot of wetlands to the exterior and they are also using the back of the lots to move stormwater. So while the lots are a little bit deeper, it's really used for stormwater. But in this case here, in 2016, they actually have had the highest amount of sales, as far as that has. They had a home that sold for just under $500,000, $497,100. They also had three other homes that sold between 450 to 500. But what's interesting is the lot sizes here are .18 to .26 acres. Quite frankly, not too different from what we are proposing today. So again, what we're very conscious of when this, when this community was planned, is that we wanted to be certain that we were able to bring in a lower density, but also have the lot sizes large enough to allow the flexibility to build single or two-story homes, which could achieve very nice square footage at very nice rates.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Commissioners, those who have public comments closed.
I would say if we go forward, we probably have to put a limitation on the price of two stories, if that's possible.
We could make, we could make that a recommendation, part of the motion.
And Mr. Chairman, can we also add into that, those changes, it'll be in the floodplain managers' recommendations also?
Okay. We have to have a motion before we can make changes to, if anyone wants to make one.
Okay, I can totally make a motion to accept this with the stormwater concerns, water management concerns, and the limitation to two full stories.
Okay. We have a motion? Does anybody understand it?
Let me make one question. Two full stories above grade or two full stories after pilings? I'm trying to, just- Because the way I understand the floodplain recommendation is that these be built on pilings. Those pilings-
It doesn't necessarily mean that the first floor has to be-
Does it have to be on grade? I'm asking.
We have a requirement that first floor should only be a certain instance above the crown of the road. I would say the fact would be the limitation right there.
Well, the first floor would be, in the floodplain, would be on pylons and they would not be able to use that for anything other than parking. And then at the top of the pylons would start the first story. And we have a director's opinion that's been in place for quite a while and a building department's following the state building cut, that, that's how you count that.
Okay. You understand that?
Completely.
Matt, can you clarify that?
Yes, I can. Matt Carver for the planning department. This particular flood zone requires finished floor elevation to be one foot above the flood zone height. In other words, it would be at eight feet.
Eight feet.
Eight feet would be the finished floor elevation of the first habitable floor, which means there's going to have to be some elevation of this from grade because of the flood zone requirements.
Then you're talking about-
That's not eight feet above grade.
No, it is not eight feet above grade and probably it's going to be three, four, five, maybe. But that's-
That's eight feet above the place, elevation, right?
See that?
See, okay.
If you're talking-
So the ground is already four feet.
As far as the definition of a story, we rely on the building code definition and we would not consider anything below that first floor, finished floor elevation as a story.
So a two-story would be from that point up?
Yes, sir.
So that's really three stories.
Well, it's not going to be them running the parking, but the way the elevation is, they're probably sitting at about four, five feet. What is the elevation of this?
Most of the lots, some actually do currently sit at about seven right now, most are six. Down near the ditch in the bayou, there are a few that are four or five, so-
So you get above eight?
The average would be about two feet to get to eight across the site, give or take.
Just tell the parking to- What was that anticipate, the crown of the road to be typically?
The crown of the road in this case, it varies a little bit between seven and eight, so.
Yeah, we limit the stories to starting, say, three feet, three foot six above the crown of the road. Does that, do that work?
I think their definition only covers that.
I do too.
Okay.
It covers it. So just two stories, I think is-
If you say two stories, they're only going to get two moving stories. If they, if there's a parking space under there, then that, that's going to count as a story.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to be able to fit one in.
No.
Well, if they, they would only have one story above, that's what I'm saying, if they can build on, they're going to park under it, correct?
No.
If you raise that house high enough that you can park under, you're going to have to count that first level as part of his one story, right?
We would rank the recommendation that you limit the condition to two stories and let the building code determine how to count those two stories.
Okay, right.
So why don't you give us your motion again, or Karen, you can read back what you got. Have we clarified?
Right now, my thought is that we make motions to approve floodplain recommendations and limit the two stories.
I think that's it.
That's the same thing.
Okay. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? Anybody on a second? Okay, motion's going to die for lack of a second. We have any motion?
I think we're still thinking about it. Unless y'all are trying to kill it.
I mean, I think anytime the developer comes in and goes below what his density requirements could be, or density possibilities are, then it's a good thing. So I think what they're doing is, is somewhat compromised. They could sell the property, it might come in there and try to cluster this stuff and max it out to me. And I know Ms. Lassur said that she didn't think they'd get it. There's always that possibility though.
On the other hand, though, her point being, if you count, if you have the pylons high enough to park under, which was mentioned, and then you put two stories on that, you're talking about a three-story.
I think we've killed that, haven't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've done away with that. So that's not going to be an issue. I think the main issue now is the density. That's the only other thing we had.
I think the proposed density is good, I mean, if it's less, it's-
Yeah.
But I don't, what I'm saying is, I don't want the neighborhood to come back and say, wait a minute, now we got three-story houses.
Well, they'll probably then maybe have a better determination and they get to the commission too.
Yeah.
You know what, I'd like to hear that, that motion, all the time. Is it appropriate for him?
Sure, he can restate it.
A motion to approve with the recommendations of the, our manager-
Floodplain manager.
Floodplain manager. And limit the height above grade to two full stories.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to take it in ten minutes and we'll be back. We can get going again. Matt, go lead them to...
I like you. Pretty cool. Can your husband have a boat? You look like boat people.
There's something bad in the air.
You're a water person, though, aren't you? I kid Carol.
Oh, yeah. Probably so. I believe you. I don't... I drink twice a year, so I may have to take it out.
I tried today. I'll have it coming in for a league game on a day.
Huh. Official story. Life goes on, right? Life goes on.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Next item is number six.
The next item on our agenda is item number six. This is the Lakeview subdivision. It's being reviewed by Bob Barante, and he will introduce the project.
Good evening again. This is a major development order application submitted by... Submitted by Interlight Engineering Corp., requesting approval of a 57-unit, single-family home subdivision with two commercial offices, lots, and it's on Business Center Drive, and with the current future land use now of small neighborhood. You may remember, you've seen this, but when the small-scale amendment for a small piece to get it all to small neighborhood, that has passed. That has passed, so it's now one complete parcel, and you see the proposed... I know you've asked some questions on the back before, but this is what we're here to discuss today. This project doesn't meet transportation concurrency. The proportionate fair share amount of $93,070 will be due. It'll be split between US 98 Transportation Corridor East for $75,500 and the US 98 Transportation Corridor Point 120-E, $17,570. And I will, if you don't have any questions for me right now, I'll turn it over to Interlight's representative to give you in-depth detail.
Commissioners, anybody have any questions for staff at this board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think Bob pretty well covered everything that we wanted to talk about. It's a 57-unit residential subdivision. We have a pretty significant public and civic component on this project, which has led to a lot of positive onlook from the surrounding community. We've actually proposed the subdivision all on the north side. The bottom 20 feet is actually a public access easement that'll be dedicated to Walton County that will consist of an eight-foot multi-use path. That path will actually connect Thompson Road over to Helen McCall Park, which currently people use just kind of a grassed area on the federal land south of this. This will actually give everyone a paved area to go to. We also have a large lake that's currently, it's approximately 1.8 acres, I believe. We're enlarging that to 3.2 acres. We'll be aerating it significantly with a fountain inside of it to be the civic component of our project. We'll also be stocking it with some species according to FDP requirements, and we'll be putting some fish feeders out just for the, you know, in the public area so that they can feed the fish and just enjoy the lake. We do have a commercial component on the front of this project. That has been one item of question that came up, I believe, in our last meeting from a few people, and we spoke about then that that commercial component is actually required by the Land Development Code for small neighborhood development. So that was the reasoning for that. Our client originally didn't want to do that and wanted to try to find some other ways not to do it, but what we determined is we were just going to have to do it. So they chose some small office buildings to be really the least intrusive commercial component we can do in this area. So that pretty well sums up the project, and take any questions that you have.
So you all are approving that access between Thompson and the park? You all going to pave that, is what you said?
What was that now?
The easement.
The easement? We're putting in your standard eight-foot-wide asphalt multi-use path, correct? And it will actually go around the lake. It's probably a little hard to make out on this map, but there's a small little paver circle that it joins the lake with some park benches and fish feeders and things on it. There'll also be a bridge. The south and east of this property has some very deep mosquito-controlled ditches, and so we have to cross that. We'll be providing the timber bridge to cross that, and then I think Public Works coordinated with us in the past, and said they'll take it from there eventually. Right now, there's no good way for them to pave over to the entrance to Helen McCall, but we're providing a bridge, and the county can have it from there.
Very good. Commissioners, any other questions? You don't see any right now. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public comment portion of the meeting. We have one person who signed up to speak. I think that says Kelly Layman at yahoo.com. Is that you?
I walked in late. I was not sworn.
You saw the square of the form. The testimony you're about to give is four stories.
I did. Thank you for your leadership service on this commission. I have not spoken to this panel before, and I wonder if the narrative description on the geographical location of this project being a little off is an item that would need to, that you all would need to fix before it can be considered.
What is it? What's off?
The intersection of Highway 331 and 98. You'd be turning west, not east, to get to this project, and you'd be going more than four miles, not .4 miles. Those may have been typos and oversights, but I own property in the area and was not noticed.
Okay. As far as, that's probably a typo, Mark, is that?
I would assume that the dates and times and places the meetings were sent to property owners within 300 feet.
I was not noticed.
Do you live within 300 feet of this?
I'm probably a little over, but I know that some other folks were not noticed.
Okay. Without them here to testify, I don't think it would be...
What is your protocol or what does Chapter 163 say about the narrative description of a project?
I don't know if the Chapter 163 says anything about it. Off the top of my head, I...
I think Chapter 163 is solid on that.
So the narrative is...
Something we actually...
Extraneous?
Yeah, something we actually do.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm saying that without actually sitting here with 163 in front of me, but I don't remember anything in 163 about it.
Okay. At what point would... I don't have any issues on density or any of the commercial at the front in any of those issues, having looked over the plans. I just wonder at what point this area would trigger concurrency, and I know it was mentioned it doesn't need to be a consideration at this point, but you, this commission particularly may recall that there are, I believe, four DO orders at the four corners and the corner over at Mall Drive, one intersection east, which are all going vertical. Further, there is something that this commission has not come up to yet, which is a nine-phase development over 10 acres you may be familiar with, Rosa Del Mar. It's an active DO. It had some clearing issues and violations that they're working on with private property owners nearby, as well as DEP through the county-owned land that they accidentally cleared. That is going to be 71,000 square feet of retail, 91,000 square feet of office, 46,000 square feet of hotel, and 55 square feet of residential.
Is that on 98?
That is on 98, and it is, I believe, literally diagonal from this parcel up on 98.
Up into the west?
It is.
Or just to the east?
It's to the west of McCall Park. Abuts McCall Park, abuts the entrance where the recycling area is that the county owns.
Did you say that was a existing deal?
Yes.
But I need to understand.
Yes. So at what point, you know, we have Walton Skate Park possibly going into McCall. We have the cut-through to 393 coming off McCall. There's an electric golf company going up on the corner of Mole Drive and 98. Church Street Village is doubling its homes to 182 on the north side of that area, and Church Street Landing was approved with a DO. That's a lot of vehicle load coming on, and I just wonder at what point we're going to talk about public safety and vehicle load.
That would probably be a good question. Take the county commissioners.
So it's not...
That's outside of our personnel.
Not at this panel at any point in time. No window.
Well, and quite frankly, unless I'm badly mistaken, what traffic concurrency means is if the road is impacted, it's already over... That's the word I'm looking for. It is, it cannot handle the current capacity. Then the statute provides that they pay into a fund, and that's all that can happen. That there's, it's almost impossible, if not impossible, to deny someone a vested development right.
Then I would just give a cautionary tale then to this commission. When you see that nine-phase, up to nine-phase project come on on 98, please. I know that there are some neighbors of mine that will be approaching the county commission about a light, but it would be nice to be in a proactive preemptive posture as opposed to reactive and be addressing a tragedy.
Yeah, we'll make, I'm glad you saw that, because what would happen is we would, that would trigger something called a warrant study, and we will try to remember to make sure we notify public works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? If you see a number, close the public comments portion of the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make one request, we want to enter the staff report into the public record.
Okay. Accept.
Thank you.
Is that something that we've got to do now?
It sure makes our record cleaner if we do it.
Okay, I'm just curious. We've never done that before.
Yes, sir. I was asking to start cleaning it in, moving it in.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. We have any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Go ahead, Mike.
Next item, Commissioners, is item number seven, Holly Bay Estates. This project's also reviewed by Bob Barante, and he will introduce it.
I'll stop saying good evening. This is a major development order application submitted by Seaside Acquisition Group, LLC, to develop 17 single-family residential units located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Chat Holly Road and J.D. Miller Road. The project is located on 4.30 plus or minus acres with a future land use of neighborhood infill, and this project's traffic is in concurrency, so there'll be no fees associated with that. And with that, if there's no questions, I'd like to enter the staff report into record.
Accepted.
And then I would like to turn it over to Interlight.
I am Mark Murray, representing Interlight. I have been sworn in. We concur with the staff report, and if you all have any questions, just please let me know.
That was almost too easy, wasn't it? Commissioners, any questions? I can't believe that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have no one who signed up to speak. Mr. Kramer?
David Kramer from Santa Rosa Beach, and was one of the affected owners notified within 300 feet of the project. I have not been sworn.
Mr. Kramer, do you solemnly swear or from the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I had the opportunity to get a notice for the public neighborhood meeting. That neighborhood meeting was held on a weekday at... You're Mr. Murray, is that correct? And I called Mr. Murray ahead of time to confirm, but it was a problem with, and I think it's a matter I want to address, two issues tonight. One is that, that the public meetings for the neighbors was held during the day, a working day, at the library, and because of other prior commitments, I couldn't make a neighborhood meeting at 2:00 or 2:00 or 3:00 or 5:00.
Fix it at 4:00.
Whatever. It was still in the afternoon before my day was done, and I don't know how well-attended it was, but I couldn't make it. So for whatever purposes for the neighborhood meetings take place, I would ask that staff be advised that future ones made to, at some time when the work in public can actually, and the neighbors can get to them. Regarding the project, this project, if I'm not mistaken, is located in the town center zoning, and it's located on a, I'll beg the staff's deflection...
It's an infill.
It's an infill parcel outside of the town center?
It's outside of the town center.
Okay, but it's surrounded by town center. Okay. It's one parcel outside of the town center. What I get in that is that it's located on a major arterial, which is, I think it's major arterial, is it a major collector?
It's a minor collector.
That be J.D. Miller or Chat Holly?
Chat Holly.
In any case, it's a, if you know, it's a stoplight intersection there at the Bay Restaurant. This project's located within half a mile of this building and this meeting place. My question is, and my asking of this board is of recommendation, that the backyards about seven or eight...
Seven, eight, nine.
Eight or nine of the lots back onto, where their backyards will be on Chat Holly Road. There's only one other subdivision that does this. It's down by either Hartstevett or Nellie Road, and all those backyards are fenced. And I don't think that something this close to the GovEd Center and in the town center and on a major collector is only going to get busy. I would ask one recommendation, that if they're not in their subdivision covenants or restrictions, that you put a recommendation into the board that the lots that literally back up onto Chat Holly Road, so everybody's not looking at laundry hanging out there and kids' play toys and stuff on what's, you know, is now a new major thoroughfare because it's got sidewalks and all that in Chat Holly, that, just like they've done in the other neighborhoods on Chat Holly, if your backyard goes up to, that they put a fence up. So that's my only question with the, and ask for recommendation, is that they do like the neighbors have done in the good, in the D.R. Horton subdivisions, that if you're backing up to what I think is a major collector, but according to Mac, it's a minor. Either way, it's a busy road there at Chat Holly, and a lot of the public sees it, the people that come here, and I don't want to be looking at anybody's laundry and stuff and kids' toys and stuff.
You come by something like a six-foot privacy fence?
Four foot, five foot, six... I'm not really, I'm asking them that, I think it's a matter of taste, and I think you have four to six-foot fence would be good, just so there's some, or increase the, some planting buffer, but that may not be a beneficial... there's some, or increase the, some planting buffer, but that may not be a beneficial thing, because it, I don't want to get into the triangle of visibility at the corner either, but that, the corner a lot, but I just think that it's a, a good, long-range thing for our community, that we're, and I don't know, I didn't see it and I wasn't able to attend the meeting, so I don't know if this is restricted, that it's, if mobile homes are permitted in there or not, or single, single wides or anything like that. This is a stick-built, or is it restricted to no mobile homes, this subdivision, covenants and restrictions proposed?
There's no, there's no intention to build mobile homes, it's a single-family.
It's not a low-income housing project, right? Well, I'm not trying to cast dispersions on the project itself, but I am trying to say that in the long run, I lived there, I've lived there for 25 years, and I drive by it at least two or three times a day, this project, and like many of the other neighbors in that area are going to, and most everybody in this room at some point is going to drive by there, and we don't want it to become an eyesore, and if they, those people want to live like they want to live, I'd ask that you recommend that they put up a fence, at least for the, just not the side yards, just the backyards front on Chat Holly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Would you like to respond?
Yes, sir.
For the record again, I'm David Smith with Interlight Engineering, and the community meeting, I just wanted to clarify a few things. We had it at 4:00, we were there until, with, we had several attendees, we were there for even until 5:30, so I apologize, Mr. Kramer couldn't attend, but we were there for a long period of time, so there were a lot of members that did, that did attend, and we can't commit to doing a fence, I mean, the owner is not here, I mean, I'm not saying we won't do a fence, but we want it to be a nice area, too. I mean, we want to be good neighbors, we want to be good neighbors with Mr. Kramer and everyone else out there. We, we enjoy the community meeting, really nice people, so we do have a landscape buffer. It's an enhanced landscape buffer, so we meet all the code requirements, so we are buffering along Chat Holly as well as J.D. Miller Road, so there would be a buffer there, so we just wanted to clarify a few things.
I appreciate that, I don't think it's unreasonable, I think, I think the request to have a, and I don't know how, what requirements are on these community meetings, but I think it's very reasonable to, to try to have them when the most people who live in the area could attend, I mean.
Is that a 300-foot?
Yeah.
It, it is, we follow the same.
I don't think that's unreasonable, I'm, I'm not saying you did anything wrong, I'm just saying I think that's a very reasonable request that staff may take under consideration if you-
And I have no issue, to my knowledge, there are no time requirements, but my thought, and I apologize if Mr. Kramer couldn't attend, was four to six.
Yeah.
So then people could, people did show up before, and then people, you know, were there 5:30, like I said, we were there for a while, but I just wanted-
Maybe on, maybe on a notice, you put it, we're going to have, we're going to be there from 4:00 till, till 6:00, that way if you have questions, you can come in. Maybe that would satisfy that, and let them know that if you can't be there at 4:00, don't mean you can't come at all.
That's a good point.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could address that requirement, there is a, there is no specific time period requirement. It's expected that the community meeting would be scheduled at a time that would be convenient for the neighborhood to attend, so as to maximize participation of the neighborhood, but at present, we don't have a specific time requirement.
I understand, I just say, that might be something we could look at, it don't have to be required necessarily, I think it's a strong recommendation that you try to get as many people in the community involved as possible, always makes for an easier process.
Absolutely.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. For who?
For the engineers.
Okay.
What, do you know what type of landscaping you're being, is being called for in that buffer?
Yes, it's a 10-foot buffer. We're proposing a 10-foot buffer, and it is vegetated, per the code, I have some exhibits here if you would like to see them.
The proposed landscape plan is part of the civil plans, set, that's part of your package, and it's page 6.2.
Mine hasn't downloaded yet.
Well, it's being passed out to clarify. We have live oak, and then we have understory trees and then shrubs as well. It's three different planting types.
I'd ask another question, Mr. Chairman, regarding, I just wanted to ask if it was a-
Actually, David, you can't, because the public portion is being closed, so I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't think so, Mr. Chairman, I don't think we voted it to be closed.
Did I?
I don't remember, I just, I didn't.
I did?
Karen? No.
No, I'm sorry, I apologize, David.
Then my question was, just in relation to this, will they be, is it part of their, since I wasn't able to attend the meeting and see the, and didn't get a copy of the entire project, whether that landscape buffer was individually to be maintained by the owners or by the association?
Okay.
If it was part of the association, I, I could, I could go with that, it was going to be something that's going to be maintained by an association, but if that additional landscape individual buffer is going to wither and die, and it's individually maintained by the owners, I would ask that you modify, my rec, I could modify my recommendation that the landscape buffer be at least something that's community-maintained.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll close the public portion of the hearing. You can, you can respond. Any other questions? Can you answer that quick, I'm, I'm curious, too.
Yes, sir. We are in the development stage, and as we move into final plating, we'll be working on our covenants and restrictions, and that's another thing, too, we'll definitely take into consideration as we're preparing our covenant, and covenants and restrictions. I think it's a great idea to have it maintained, so we'll definitely take it into consideration as we get into that phase, but we're in the development phase. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Commissioners?
I recommend approval with the condition that they put a six-foot privacy fence along the back of the lots that back up the Chat Holly Road.
I'll second your motion.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion on the motion? You see a none? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. That's the recommendation, we'll go B C C.
And just, it was just along Chat Holly?
Yeah.
Okay, there you go.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item number eight on our agenda, the County Road 83 Business Storage. This item is being reviewed by Rita Banhanjadi, and she's here to present the project.
Good evening, Rita Banhanjadi from the Planning Department, and I would like to enter my staff report into evidence.
Accepted.
The CR 83 Business Storage Phase 2, this is a major development order application submitted by Jenkins Engineering, requesting an approval of a 80,640 square feet of commercial building on 9.7 acres with the future land use of light industrial, and this project is located on South County Highway 83. There was a previous development order issued last year for the front portion of the parcel for a building that I believe is under construction, and all of these buildings would be, go behind that already-approved portion. We do not have any public comments on this project. Planning Department, very, minor clarification, the only outstanding comment was from our floodplain manager, and we received those comments after we have completed the report, but I have some copies.
Was there anything significant in those?
Based on my conversation with the floodplain manager, they don't appear to be significant, but I would let the engineer comment on how they think they can address those comments.
Okay.
Any questions?
Commissioners, any questions for staff? Not right now.
Good evening, judging as Jenkins Engineering, I have been sworn in. As, as stated, this project is actually the second phase of a light industrial project that's on 83 South. The first phase is along the front edge of the road, which is currently under construction, will probably be finished in about 30 days or so. The second phase is in the rear of the property, and it consists of seven buildings. The property is, has light industrial to the south, and stage lanes on the other two sides, the resident neighborhood right now. The development itself, the swimwear management plan will consist of two wet ponds that will be located here in the middle of the property. There's another wet pond that services the front portion up here that was part of Phase 1, that's a separate, not connected system, but the main portion back here. The floodzone question that came up is actually, we have, the area of floodzone is actually through here, and we have one corner of the building that's located in there, and Aaron, the floodplain manager, has asked us to give him some field calculations for that corner and for the access roadway coming in. We have to provide compensatory storage, which is provided in our province, so it's not a problem. Other than that, it's pretty cut straightforward, be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Commissioners? Yes, sir.
These are going to be like Butler buildings?
They're, they're actually warehouse buildings, warehouse buildings with some office space included inside.
Okay.
Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We will open the public comment portion of the hearing. We have nobody who's signed up, is there anybody who would like to speak on this? Okay, see a none, we'll close the public comments. Commissioners?
Motion, second.
Yeah, motion, second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners, the next item on our agenda is item number nine, Sugar Sand Estates. This is being reviewed by Vivian Schammel, and she's here to introduce the project.
Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to enter the staff report into the record.
Accepted.
This is a major development order, planned unit development application for, consisting of 39 single-family homes on 19.61 acres with a future land use of conservation residential two units per acre. Project is located at 637 Sugar Drive, which is south of U.S. There were two public comment letters that we received yesterday, so they did not make it into your packet, you should have them there. I think both of them were not regarding the project itself, but the, the concern seemed to be the 90, the traffic at 98. This project does not meet traffic concurrency, proportionate fair share amount is $105,700. There would be a recreation fee buyout of 6%, which will be paid for at the time of plating. There are some conditions and comments from the staff. Well, the first one, the P U D, which would be conditions, is that they are requesting five, five-foot side setbacks, and also an encroachment of vehicle parking into the public right-of-way, of which this is a private street, of approximately five feet for, to allow for four vehicle parking spaces adjacent to the south-side amenity area, which is a pool. So those are the two requests for the deviations for the P U D. There are several comments from planning staff, our floodplain manager, similar to another project tonight, is requesting to establish the base flood elevation and limit fill and provide compensatory storage and construct residences in the floodplain and accessory structures in accordance with comprehensive plan. The environmental department had two comments, just to label the wetland buffer area and, and wetland area, and with a specific comment, and then also the, labeled the 50-foot buffer from the, from the lake. Those are the conditions that staff has made. We request to have all comments stated to be addressed prior to proceeding to the B C C hearings, if you should so move it forward.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Thank you. You're up.
All right. I'm back. Ed Stanford, Core Engineering Consulting, relatively straightforward project, 39 lots on roughly 19.61 acres. There are dry retention ponds, these lots are roughly 45, 42 to 50 feet wide, you know, in the cul-de-sac, they get a little bit, little bit larger. Mr. Cole is the developer-owner and will be the builder of the homes. He's got a track record around 30A and has done, I don't know, probably several hundred homes in different subdivisions, with similar style and vernacular that, that we see along 30A. He will remain in control of the HOA until he gets to the point where he will build out or sell out. There's a pool area, as Vivian discussed, there's a couple of feet of the parking spaces that are actually going to be within the right-of-way, they're not going to be in the travelway, they're going to be the right-of-way, and that's a, that's a private drive for, that will be maintained and operated by the HOA. The, there's two comments by the environmental group that are more text-related, and we just have to add these one nuance to the notes, and, and also show a buffer, which has been on there before, but in whatever reason, it just didn't get in that last of middle. And we are currently waiting on a response from FEMA on the comment from Aaron, floodplain manager, regarding our unnamed A-zone, so we should, we hope to have that resolved in another, you know, week or so. So, you know, meet up on that tomorrow, hopefully we've got a way forward with FEMA, get their information back, and we can resolve all of these outstanding items.
Okay.
Did you say that you may have, are these going to remain private roads?
Yeah, this is a private, this is not going to be dedicated to public, it's 40 feet wide.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think she said setbacks are five feet instead of seven?
Yes, sir. It just afforded him a couple more feet, you know, the, there's 20 acres nearly of, of quote-unquote "land" in this, but 10 of it, or nearly 10, is taken up by Wetlands Conservation Asemen, and that's, that helps him to get large enough footprints for his homes and the number of units.
I could just reduce the lots a couple and make them setbacks like they should be by the code.
Well, that's what the, the developer asked for, and it's an opportu, it's an option for us, and that's what we've requested.
Any other questions for the developer? Yeah. Thank you, sir. We have, we'll open the public comments, there had nobody signed up to speak, is there anybody who wishes to address this? Were you sworn in?
No, sir, for the record, my name is Mike Sedanson, I have not been sworn in.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I just wanted to address a couple of concerns. I'm a homeowner, homeowner within 300 feet of the project. I'm probably one of, I'm not sure how many people received the letter, but given the geographic location of the property, I'm thinking maybe, is there a number of letters that were sent out? Do you have a count on those?
It's, it's something like 62.
60?
Yeah.
Okay, well, my biggest concern, which has already been addressed, is the traffic situation, where this project is located, Sugar Drive is a one-way in and one-way out road, so there's already an immense amount of density, you know, for the automobile traffic right there at that intersection with 98. So that's, of course, one of the big concerns that we have. I'm not, not aware of a lot of people that have, that are, that are, have been made aware of this project, although, you know, I'm sure the letters went out as directed, but given the location of the sign also, in reference to Sugar Drive being a one-road in and one road out, there are a lot of residents out there who don't come in Sugar Drive as far as the sign, the notification, and who are not in that 300-foot area to be recorded, so I'm concerned that a lot of people out there that are going to be directly affected by this project have not been notified of the project. There's no reason for them to come further down Sugar Drive once they pass their, their point of domain, so, you know, that's one of the biggest concerns we had right there. The setbacks-
The setbacks, the size of the lots is another. Sugar Estates, which is where I'm located, we're on half-acre lots there. Of course, that was before water and sewer was brought in, but, and then, but the, the other subdivisions, Escata, Short Line Estates, those lots are considerably larger than, than what's shown here on the density two, and so that's another concern that we have as well. The two units per acre, of course, you know, most of that is wetland, so that, that cuts it about in half right there. Public safety, again, was a concern that we had, you know, with the number of traffic. And also Sugar Drive is an, is an egress, and I'm not sure, is there anything that dictates egress as far as the number of populated areas that can be with just a one-service road? Is there anything that's directly connected to that?
No, sir, we don't. At some point, that intersection would warrant a traffic light. We're not quite to that step yet and ultimately, US Highway ninety-eight will be six-laned all the way to the Bay County line. The contract is under construction all the way to Tangamar from the west to the east. But there are plans at the TPO to further expand that highway to six lanes all the way to Bay County.
Because I know just by sitting through some of the earlier meetings that we've had, you must it by you, being directly across from Sugar Drive and all the, all the construction that's going on in that area right now, that's going to make that an immensely populated intersection right there.
A lot of people down there.
Right, exactly. So, but that's basically, I just wanted to express a few concerns and, and the biggest one being that, you know, the number of people that were notified. I'm sure everything was done in accordance, but, but I know on my street, I was the only person on our street that was served, that received a notice because I'm within three hundred feet, but nobody else in our neighborhood that I'm aware of, and my wife and I, we actually made copies of the letter and spread them out as fast as we could, given the time that we were allowed. But there's subdivisions, like I said, like Short Line Estates and Escata, which is directly across the entrance of the product, of the project that's being proposed here. But where the sign is located, it's located on the southwestern corner of the property, which puts it further south in the entrance to Escata and to Short Line Estates. So none of those residents who are, are beyond that three-hundred-foot mark are aware of this project or have any reason to be aware unless they just went for a little joyride and went south of where they live and just to the end of our street to turn around and come back somewhere, they would have seen the notice. So just wanted to express.
So you're opposed to the project?
I'm not opposed to the project. I'm opposed to the, to the density of it and also to, well, I guess in that sense, I am opposed in the number, the amount of traffic that it will bring, additional traffic that it'll bring to our area.
Okay.
Right in there. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the commission could request that Public Works work with the applicant to analyze that intersection of US ninety-eight and consider whether a traffic light would be warranted.
Is there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? Okay, see enough. We'll close the, oh, I'm sorry.
Ma'am?
Yeah.
I was under the impression that BCC needed to send a letter to DOT for a traffic study first. Is there a different process available?
No, the Board of County Commissioners has to, usually through Public Works. Public Works comes and makes a recommendation to the board to have a warrant study completed and then that recommendation or that request is made to DOT by the board.
This is, I'm sure all or most of the commissioners, commissioners know this, but Sugar is the immediate west street of Thompson that we were just talking about, which is the immediate street west of Mall and Helen McCall Park and the skate park and so forth.
Right.
All of them have northern load, every single one of them. He mentioned the bayou on the north end. Thompson has a north entry point for the median. Church Street comes across and aligns to Mall Drive. That's a six-pack of accidents. We cross over that every day and usually on Monday or Tuesday morning, there's glass in the median. So in some ways, I'm shocked that it hasn't been put on the traffic study list yet. I attempted with the previous District Five Commissioner to get staff interested in doing a traffic study. Was told it wasn't, it hadn't come to bear yet. I, I think the level of projects, the three just tonight, in the immediate area of the six-pack intersection, if you will, it's time. So to the extent that you all, in your perspective and your roles, can keep a lookout for this vehicle load, we're very grateful.
I understand. Thank you.
Matt, you were saying we could make recommendations that they work?
If it be the pleasure of the board, you could certainly add a recommendation to have the applicant work with Public Works to consider whether or not a traffic light would be warranted at that intersection.
Is anybody, any other members of the public wish to be heard? Just, just this minute, you're, you're with the applicant. You get to talk later. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing. Now if you want to talk, you can talk all you want to.
I just wanted to talk on the...
Would you, would you come up?
I just wanted to talk on the lot widths.
Okay.
The setbacks and stuff, most of the...
Your name?
Daniel Cole.
Were you sworn in, Daniel?
Yeah. No, I was not.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give before this board will be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, now you're good.
It seems like several of the communities that we build on, anytime you get less than fifty feet, you automatically move to a five-foot setback in the planned unit developments that we're building in for the fact that the driveway is twelve feet wide and you're not going to end up with a desirable house at all, you know, with a sixteen-foot-wide house to accommodate seven and a half feet. It's because you're losing fifteen feet.
I understand.
So, I didn't know if anybody else had questions about it or anything, but I wanted to, I wanted to put the garage in the back, or garage is, single or double car garages in the back, so by the time I pull out back, you know, I'm losing a lot of width.
Okay. Anybody, any questions for the developer? Thank you very much for your explanation.
I will als, I will also state that this, this was, there was a development order granted for this property for forty lots, not thirty-nine back in oh-eight, and I wanted to make some changes. So I ended up having to start from scratch to make the changes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioners?
Recommend approval with the condition that the, after work with the, what Matt said. Who does he need to talk to, Matt?
That the applicant work with Public Works to analyze the intersection to determine if a traffic light might be warranted.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Is there any, any way that we could suggest or amend that to go back to the regular setback line? I'm not prepared to have your preferences. If everybody, if law's law, let everybody pile down by the wall.
Well, they changed that a lot, I mean, that's something that's changed a lot. Yeah, not unusual at all.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
We have one opposed. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item on our agenda is the last item. And this is number ten, Emerald Coast Business Center West. It's also being reviewed by Bob Baranti and he will enter the project.
Bob, how'd you get so busy tonight?
I requested it because I like coming in front of you.
Man, you practiced that line, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
Any one of you have any questions?
I guess so.
This is a major development order application submitted by Jenkins Engineering Incorporated, requesting approval for twenty-seven thousand square feet of office space on Business Center Drive off of US Highway ninety-eight on two point seven five acres with coast, future land use of Coastal Center. The, this, this parcel also does not meet transportation concurrency and will have a total proportionate fair share amount of two hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. And if there are no further questions, I'd like to enter the, the staff report into record.
We'll accept it, but we're going to find some questions for you.
Okay.
No, I'm just kidding. Anybody, go ahead.
Just for my, just to, I want to know why is the fourth proportionate fair share so big for this project relative to the other?
That figure is deter, I'm sorry, sir.
Here he comes.
There he is.
I thought that was his question. Bill Minneter with Dewberry Properies, the proportionate fair share is based on the impacted segments and this is on Highway ninety-eight in a severely impacted segment. And it's, generates quite a large amount of trips based on square footage.
You got the wrong. Bobby got one question.
And you handed it off.
I just think one of the sit-her of the whole meeting would find.
I'm going to start calling you Tom Brady, man. You pass it on.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
No problem, and I'll turn it over to the...
Yes, sir.
Jamie Eubanks with Jenkins Engineering again. To be perfectly honest, unless you have any questions, I don't have too much to add that Bob didn't. It's twenty-seven thousand square feet on nearly three acres. It is directly across, as you can see on the site plane, you can see the, threw me off there, directly across from the existing business center. There, you can see all the lots up there at the top of the screen. It's just essentially phase two of that.
Is this just going to be retail or office space or what?
General business and probably, mainly general business and retail-type inventory space.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Again, we have nobody who's signed up to speak. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on this item?
Good evening, Commissioners. John King, I'm the applicant.
Were you sworn in?
I have been sworn in. I was told, I actually developed the lots on the other side of the street as well. I waited till we had the Highway ninety-eight improvements funded and had the understanding on this that there wasn't going to be any proportionate fair share. So I just wanted to bring that up tonight. Asked to get through. I'll deal with it at the county commission level, I guess, but I was told that, that that segment of Highway ninety-eight, all of those improvements six-laned it, has been, the monies were funded and, and so, no.
Matt, you address that?
At present, our traffic concurrency system still requires payment of proportionate fair share. We are in the process of analyzing that segment of our comprehensive plan and land development code. That study won't be done until sometime later this year, but it's likely that we could move from impact, from proportionate fair share as a system of managing concurrency to a straight impact fee or a mobility fee. It's likely that it will become an impact fee. Anyone that's paid those impact proportionate fair share would get credit towards any impact fees that would be proposed.
So it has nothing to do with Highway ninety-eight being expanded?
That will be factored into the analysis also. But at present, those changes have not been made.
Okay.
I think they look at the applicant, too, and decide whether they want to make him pay more or not, don't they?
Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard on this? See enough. We'll close the public comments. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, and I believe that's the last item. We will stand adjourned. No, not that many items.